Good evening, we are calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. We're going into closed session items, but before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Do I have any public comment on closed session items, Mr. Bassinet?
There's no public comment for closed session items.
Great, seeing that there are none, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. See you all at 7 o'clock, thank you. Good evening, we are recommending to open session. My name is Elba Gonzalez-Mares and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely. You can join via Zoom. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Elba Gonzalez Mares y esta es la mesa de educación del Distrito Escolar Unificado del Valle de Napa, NVUSD por sus siglas en inglés. La mesa de educación de NVUSD está llevando a cabo una reunión regular esta noche, en la que todos pueden participar de forma remota. Puede unirse a través de Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the more button on the bottom of your screen and choose language interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meetings are Paul Huertas and Claudia Lindgren. May we have one of the interpreters please translate these directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, los servicios de interpretación van a estar disponibles durante esta sesión. Para elegir los servicios de interpretación, favor de fijarse en la parte media de su pantalla, en la parte inferior. Ustedes pueden ver un signo de mundo a favor de hacer un clic o un chasqueo y elegir el lenguaje en español y pueden escuchar la junta de una manera simultánea como se va efectuando, desgraciado, y se puede escuchar en un canal separado. Desgraciadamente, si ustedes están llamando, los servicios de interpretación simultánea no van a estar disponibles. Muchas gracias y estamos a sus ordenes.
Yes, yes. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, student board member?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Dooley?
Here.
Quorum present, thank you.
Thank you Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation remains virtual, online only. This meeting tonight is in accordance to the open meeting rules in the state of California for the governor's order. On June 11, 2021, the governor issued executive order N0821, which expressly extends the flexibility concerning the conduct of public meetings through September 30, 2021. NVUSD will continue to conduct our public meetings online through September 30. As trustees, we have returned to the boardroom. However, in order to ensure access to our meetings without any limitations, we are holding meetings online with remote access via Zoom for the public and guests. I'm going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All board of trustees and the superintendent are in video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present by video. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the raised hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. There are two ways to make a public comment within the time allotted for the public comment on any eligible agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it's your turn to speak, your name will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at NVUSD.org/Board. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when the public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, the last four digits of your phone number will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand by phone are available on the district's website at NVUSD.org/Board. In addition, committee members were allowed to submit comments via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org up until 8:00 AM this morning. For every agenda item, I will prompt the meeting participants who have joined us via Zoom for public comment. Please follow the instructions just provided when you would like to comment on an item. Okay, alright, so... I will now ask trustee Gracia to report on closed session items.
Yes, there is nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you trustee Gracia. We will now go down and do our flag salute and I will ask trustee Gracia to conduct us.
Certainly, be happy to. Everyone can please rise, just flag, and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you trustee Gracia. You will now go into item E3. So an announcement that this meeting is recorded for live streaming and archiving on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced located on the district's webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. We will now go into item E4, approval of agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Water. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstained? Great, thank you. We're now going to item E5, approval of minutes. This is the August 5, 2021 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstained? Thank you. And now our next item, Dr. Messetti, is do we have any visitors of employee organizations to recognize tonight?
I was just checking, I'm gonna double check because there are some online listeners that are not identifiable, so I just want to make sure. Is Ms. Gail Young here? Please raise your hand. Mr. Hector Gallegos? Please raise your hand. Ms. Leslie Walder? Please raise your hand. So I do not think any of those are them and they are not here, so they're probably exhausted because it's the first week of school and they have a lot to do on these first couple of days. So I'm sure we'll see them at an upcoming meeting.
It's great to see them, so welcome back.
Yes, yes, they were all there. Yeah, yes.
Alright, so thank you, Dr. Messetti. We're now going into item F of public comments and non-agenda items. This is where members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during this section of the agenda inasmuch as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Before we move ahead, I will ask trustee Gracia to report if any public comment was submitted via email.
Yes, no public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before the board meeting.
Thank you trustee Gracia. Right, and now I will ask Mr. Bassinet, do we have any public comment?
We do have public comment. First attendee will be Alyssa.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Alyssa Kresh and I'm a current senior at Napa High School. I'm here tonight to speak briefly about Napa Schools for Climate Action, which is a local youth-led group working to combat climate change within Napa County. I'm the current co-president of this group and tonight, our other co-president Emily Bit will be sharing a little bit about what we have been up to since we last crossed paths. As you may remember, in the spring of 2019, the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees adopted our resolution, which is the Call to Climate Action Resolution, that addresses climate change both within our school district and our community. Since then, we've made much progress in our fight for climate action. As a brief overview, Napa Schools for Climate Action is composed of students and teachers from various Napa County schools, local elected officials, community members, and more, that are all working together towards a common goal, which is reducing our county's greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by before the year 2030. Back in the spring of 2020, we inherited Napa Schools for Climate Action from our predecessors, who worked vigilantly with you all. After several months of attending and hosting meetings, connecting with our local elected officials, and getting involved in pre-existing projects, we launched many of our own. From fossil-free future to hosting a countywide contest to a Woodlands Protection Ordinance, we've become busy and are excited to share our progress with you. Emily will get more in-depth about our endeavors a little later on, but thank you for allowing us to share today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet?
Next speaker will be the person with the phone number 624-5605.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Norma Ortiz and I just want to mention that as a parent, I am pleased requesting as a precaution for this district to require physical distance during lunch when students have their mask off and expanding COVID-19 testing to every school site as needed. And I would say at least once a month. The goal continues to be keeping our children, teachers, school staff, our families, and community with zero COVID cases. I am requesting to please get notifications via Parent Square text messages. Also, if of any possible positive case or cases, any potential action, measures, resolutions, and the respective monitoring that the district determines in this respect. All of our schools in our district have opened for in-person learning. So when the bell rings for students to follow their schedules, when I have dropped off my daughter, who is a seventh grader, many students get all together instead of being reasonable in many cases as they enter their classrooms. On my part, I have had several conversations with my daughter to deal with this issue. Yet she can only do her part, but I feel it is an important practice that all students get constant reminders in this regard and that we all work together and keep our schools as safe and secure as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
Next speaker is the person with the name call-in user two.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Great, hi, my name's Lori Stelling and I am a Napa parent of an eighth grader. And I'm calling tonight to congratulate Emily Bit for being chosen as student board member and to also thank everyone who was a part of choosing Emily for this position. I've been a member of Napa Climate Now since my son was nine and I was really, I was concerned that I was living in denial of our climate reality. And it was difficult for me as an adult, and it continues to be, right, to continually take the step of clear seeing, of actually seeing the climate emergency as it is. And I cannot tell you over this last year what an honor it's been to bear witness to Emily and Alyssa and the other Students for Climate Action speak with passion and steadiness and integrity and well-researched data to electeds. I heard them speak in American Canyon and in Calistoga. And it just keeps striking me, I'm so moved by how much courage they have to do what many adults cannot do, which is to see again this climate reality as it actually is, to see what's really at stake, their future, and to actually do something about it. And they're doing it. And so I know, it sounds like Emily's going to talk about the amazing things they've accomplished so far this year, but I can tell you, real policy change is happening and they are beginning to move mountains. And I just can't encourage you enough to support them 100% in their efforts, get behind them as a school district. And we know from the most recent IPCC report how dire the situation is and all that we need to accomplish within this next 10 years. The Students for Climate Action know this, they know how to speak about it. And I, they are deeply inspiring, so thank you so much and may we adults continue to get behind them.
Thank you for your comment and we'd be remiss to not look at Emily right now and smile underneath her masks, so we're just as happy to have her. Alright, next comment, please?
Next public comment is from Greg.
Hello, my name is Greg Buerst, I'm the Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Clubs in Napa Valley. And I'd like to take a moment to celebrate the continued and deep partnership between the Boys and Girls Club and Napa Valley Unified School District. That partnership results in equitable access to life-altering enrichment programs like the arts, STEM, social and emotional programming, leadership, and health and fitness. Because of this partnership and additional state funding that the Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley was able to, because of that funding, the Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley was able to provide free access to Summer Unplugged, to over 500 members this summer. A full summer of hands-on programming that allowed kids to meaningfully reconnect with peers and mentors. Part of these programs included opportunities for NVUSD students to give thanks to agencies that supported them throughout the pandemic, including NVUSD, who approved funding in May for these vital programming. So we wanted to say thank you, pardon me. We are also incredibly pleased to have returned to school sites throughout NVUSD, including NBLA, Pueblo Vista, McPherson, Willow, Napa Junction, and Canyon Oaks, with McPherson Bellevue and Donaldson Way students being served by our Napa and American Canyon clubhouses. None of this would have been possible without the strong partnership between our two agencies and NCOE. And we are thrilled to continue that legacy of support as we commence the 2021 year. So thank you very much for that continued support and we look forward to growing this partnership more as we continue down this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Jim Wilson.
We don't hear anybody?
I'm sorry?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Beg your pardon, thank you. I'm Jim Wilson, I'm from Napa. My children are vintage high school graduates. My grandson lives in Napa, he's five months old. I teach climate responsibility in the schools and I volunteer with 350 Bay Area and Napa Climate Now. In the 2018-19 school year, based on well-established science, high school students in Napa came together to form Schools for Climate Action, a national movement to empower schools to speak up for climate justice. They campaigned for, and they won, a climate emergency declaration for our Napa Valley Unified School District. Thank you for that. I've seen students in action through the years. I've rarely seen the type of productive action as I've seen this past school year with the current leadership with Napa Schools for Climate Action. I've seen your teachers encouraging their students to speak up and be active, build wisdom, and work collaboratively. I think for everyone concerned, their students' achievement is a victory for education. Your Call to Climate Action Resolution tells it the way it is as these students won their two non-negotiables. First is the acknowledgement of the climate emergency and you did this back in May of 2019. And second is the support of climate mobilization efforts needed to achieve the goal of net-zero climate pollution by or before 2030. The current leadership team with Schools for Climate Action have spoken before the following bodies. The County Board of Supervisors, the Napa County Legislative Subcommittee, the Countywide Climate Action Committee, numerous occasions. The City of Napa and the General Plan Advisory Committee, City of St. Helena, City Council, the American Canyon City Council, and the American Canyon Planning Commission extensively. The City Council in Calistoga and the newly-commissioned Green Committee there, which is the Climate Advisory Commission to the City Council in Calistoga. And you'll hear some more about all of those wonderful accomplishments on policy levels, accelerating policy and policy implementation. But I want to touch very briefly on your Call to Climate Action Resolution. It does recognize that today's children represent a particularly vulnerable group because increasing greenhouse gases and trapped heat will almost certainly have a profound negative impact throughout their lives as well as the lives of future generations. And so I would urge you to let that be your call to climate change action and to support the courageous children who are following the mandate provided in your resolution, that is, to mobilize efforts throughout the community and in the broader communities in their efforts to reduce sources of excess trapped heat that are responsible for climate change and to support their advocacy for for taking the time not only to help people understand climate,
Mr. Wilson?
But also...
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson, for your comment.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no more public comment for non-agenda items.
Thank you. Right, that concludes our public comment for this evening. We will now go into reports. And this is under the Board of Education student board rep and we'd like to start with our student board rep.
Mr. Bassinet, if you could pull up the slideshow deck, please? Alright, so for my report tonight, I would like to talk a little bit about Napa Schools for Climate Action. As Alyssa said in her public comment, it's a group that I inherited along with some other students and we're just going to briefly talk about what we've been up to since 2019 when the resolution was adopted. Next slide, please. So here are just some photos of our group from the past few years. So I'm just going to briefly talk about a couple of things that we've done, just the major projects. So, next slide, please. So in our timeline, starting with the adoption of the resolution. So in the spring of 2019, the Board of Trustees adopted our Call to Climate Action Resolution. And then shortly after in 2019, the Students of Napa Schools for Climate Action created the Pledge to Tell the Truth About the Climate Emergency. It now has over 1,000 signatures. Those of Governor Gavin Newsom, Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi, Congressman Mike Thompson, and more. And then in the fall of 2019, Napa Schools for Climate Action was one of the main organizers of the Napa Climate Strike as part of Greta Thunberg's Global Week for Future. More recently, in late 2020, after we had taken over, we launched our Fossil-Free Future Project, which I'll talk about a little bit more later. But then in early 2021, we began to push for the moratorium in American Canyon on new gas station permits. So you might have heard trustee Water and trustee Reiser talking about the climate contests that we hosted in the spring of 2021 this year. It was the "Our Future is in Your Hands" climate contest. We opened it up to all high school students in Napa County, grades nine through 12. And the prompt was just asking them their feelings towards climate change and how they've been affected by climate change. We just kind of gave them creative freedom and we're really excited and happy about the turnout. And then most recently, we've been taking part in this project called Deforestation: Sounding the Alarm. It's an oak tree project here in Napa County. Next slide, please. So talking a little bit about Fossil-Free Future. So Fossil-Free Future was born in the winter of 2020, shortly after Governor Gavin Newsom's executive order to phase out gasoline-powered vehicles by 2035. And something that had been making local headlines at around that time was the Circle K gas station that had recently been approved in American Canyon. There were a lot of citizens that were outraged because they were concerned about the climate crisis, some were concerned about the aesthetics of the town, and more. But what we hadn't known at the time was that there were two more gas station proposals in the works in American Canyon, which would bring us to six gas stations in such a tiny, tiny town. So after discovering this, we began to attend city council meetings. We met with city council members just to see what we could do to stop any more development in American Canyon. So after rallying as many students as we could and just voicing our concerns, the American Canyon City Council eventually adopted a moratorium on all new gas station permits and it was for 45 days. And after the 45-day time period had ended, they extended it to 10 months and 15 days, which we are now in that 10-month, 15-day period. So we hope that by the end of it, we'll be on our way to some type of permanent ban. But the objective of our project was really to just, oh, next slide, please, sorry. So the objective of our project was really just to reduce our county's reliance on the fossil fuel industry. We're really strong believers that climate change shouldn't be a consumer issue. So like the burden shouldn't fall on the shoulders of working-class citizens who we obviously just like consume and use the things that are most readily available to us and that includes gas stations. And so knowing that gas stations aren't going away, gas-powered vehicles aren't going away anytime soon, we realized that a change had to be made at a different level. So that's why we're pushing for our community to really lead by example and fossil-free future is really just asking our cities to stop condoning and enabling these wrong and really unnecessary actions and development. So next slide, please. The next thing that we wanted to talk about a little bit was the "Our Future is in Your Hands" climate contest. So back in the springtime, we hosted this. This was in partnership with Napa Climate Now and the Napa Sierra Club, as well as a city council member from Calistoga, Mr. Gary Kraus. We were really pleasantly surprised by the turnout. I think we had about maybe 77 submissions. They just ranged from art pieces to, you know, someone submitted a song. The first place winner was a video game. We, the judges polled 17 finalists and then those 17 finalists then presented at a virtual award ceremony. And it was kind of like a gallery walk, but yeah. And now many of our finalists are featured in the Napa Valley Register. They've presented to the county's Climate Action Committee and some of them are on their way to be published in the Napa Vision 2015 newsletters. Next slide, please. So here are just some examples of finalist pieces. Yes, just next slide, please. Um, next slide, please. We just really briefly wanted to show some of the work that was done. And I believe one of the pieces up there was from Miss Riser's daughter. So, um, the third thing we wanted to talk about was the project that we've been working on most recently, which was the Deforestation: Sounding the Alarm project. So, um, this project was started by Katie Stillwell. She's a former Napa Sierra Club intern, and she's a college student now, and also Jim Wilson. He's one of our advisors. You heard from him during public comments. So the project was initiated by a simple question: Are we losing faster than we are gaining? So they were just interested to see the difference between the carbon sequestered by newly-planted oak trees and older oaks that have lived in American Canyon, I mean, sorry, in Napa County for a really long time now. And so what they found was that all of the newly-planted trees that we had planted over the course of eight years only sequestered about half the amount of one old oak tree. So this was very shocking information, which is why we decided to pursue it. So we presented to the Calistoga City Council recently and asked for them to adopt our resolution on protecting Napa's forests and woodlands to combat climate change. And we also asked them to declare a climate emergency, and both of our requests were passed unanimously. And yeah, next slide. Next slide, please. And then, most recently, we've been featured in The Guardian for our Fossil Free Future work and our fight against the gas station developments. So really, our plans for the future are to get each jurisdiction in our county to support our Woodlands Ordinance, and so it can be handed off to the county officials who have the power to enact like a county-wide order. And then we also are still hard at work at our Fossil Free Future project and hope that a permanent ban is in store soon. But that kind of concludes my short presentation, not really short, but that kind of concludes my presentation. Thank you all for letting us share tonight. It means a lot to us. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily, for that report.
Well done.
And may I say, it was good. It was like a bright amount of slides and and just with really, really intentional information to make sure that we are up to date to what's been happening. So really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, so we'll start with board comments, and we'll start with you, Trustee Gracia.
Sure. So on the 10th of August, I attended the first meeting of the 7-Eleven Committee. On the 16th, I attended the Welcome Back for Employees. On the 18th, I dropped off my son for the first day of high school, which was exciting for him. And then on the 19th, I had the opportunity to personally experience the traffic nightmare that descends on the high schools every day at pickup time. I was also informed by my daughter that the nachos were delicious today.
Well, I hope everyone had a wonderful, restful, and rejuvenating summer, and it's been quite a few years, a couple of years here. I had a lot of conversations with teachers at the Welcome Back Breakfast, so I just felt compelled to make a couple of brief comments. I do continue to be filled with a great deal of respect for our faculty, our staff, and our administration as each and every one of you has stepped up to meet the needs of our students in continuing unpredictable times. Dr. Masetti shared the perfect sentiment at the Welcome Back Breakfast: gratitude, an enormous appreciation for what you all have done and the work that I know you will continue to do. The pivots that you've had to make have been uncharted, but you have found a roadmap for each child. I do continue to be humbled by the stories you have shared, the ingenuity of your approach, and the sheer will of your efforts. You have reinvented what learning looks like, and I know on behalf of this board, we thank you. It hasn't been easy. There are still challenges ahead, but we are better together, and I do believe this is going to be a really good year. I attended the City of Napa Committee Meeting. Trustee Water will be reporting out shortly. And I attended the Welcome Back Breakfast for all employees on Monday in Napa, and I sadly missed the breakfast in American Canyon, but heard it was very successful.
First, I'd just like to thank Emily for that amazing presentation, and thank you.
Yes.
Thank you and your fellow climate activists for all the work that you're doing on behalf of our community and our country and our world. I'm just really grateful and impressed and and really want to get involved now with your committee. So I'll check in with Trustee Water about when the next meeting is, and I'd really like to support all of those efforts that you're leading, in particular, the moratorium on gas stations in American Canyon to see that headline that you're doing, your group's doing, that's leading the way. And so thank you. You're not a future leader, you're a current leader. So thank you so much. And then to echo Trustee Jenkowitz's sentiments of just total gratitude for the hard work of our teachers and staff at every level, and really looking forward to this being a more normal year and a year in which we can really focus on not trying to juggle, hopefully, too much the shifting landscape of the constraints. But I'm excited for this school year and just always incredibly grateful and cognizant of the hard work and blood, sweat, and tears that everybody brings to this incredibly important work. For my part, since our last meeting on August 10th, I also watched the first 7-Eleven Committee meeting and, you know, met the members and saw this work launched and grounded in the sort of broader goals of serving the programs and the students, you know, the excellent programming for our students. So even if it's about property, it's still about students in the end. On the 11th, I participated in the American Canyon Two by Two Committee, were poured out briefly later. On the 11th, I also had a Zoom meeting with the California School Board Association Regional kind of community engagement person to have a check-in about our area and serving as a new trustee. I enjoyed that. On the 17th, also, I visited American Canyon High School for the Welcome Back Reception. I wasn't able to come to the one in Napa, but I enjoyed going down and seeing the American Canyon teachers and staff. And just really wish everybody a wonderful start to the year. And I also, I didn't have to drop my two daughters off at high school because I had the very surreal experience of waving as they drove away together in our car, which is coming, Trustee Gracia. It'll be here before you know it. And that concludes my report.
Oh, my, how touching. Your children driving away in a car. It's actually very terrifying. All right, well, on the 9th, I attended the joint meeting of the City of Napa with Trustee Jenkowitz and Dr. Masetti and some folks from the city, and I'll report on that later on. And then I went to the 7-Eleven Committee Meeting, and that was on the 10th. And you know what? I was thinking, that is a good group. That is a well-rounded group. And I feel that they're, I do feel that they're all going to move forward with the best interests of our students. So, you know, I remember I wrote thank-you notes at the end of the last one, and I'm going to do that again because these are very, you know, very impressive people. Okay, on the 12th, I went to a board policy meeting. I'll report on that later on. On the 16th, I went to Back to School Napa. And as I've told you endlessly, I used to work at Napa High, so it was strange to stand out on the lawn, you know, in a different capacity. And also really strange to talk to very good friends of mine who I used to see every day, and I hadn't seen in over a year. And it was, it was wonderful, and they're excited to go back. And like the, just like the superintendent, I feel a lot of gratitude towards our employees who during an uncertain school year made us all very proud of the Napa Valley Unified School District. And then I went back to, went to Back to School Day down in American Canyon, where I also worked for a year. And I'm used to putting my foot in it, you know, making these little, you know, social faux pas, especially early in the morning before the coffee's working. And I met a lovely woman who told me she worked at American Canyon Middle School. And I said, "Oh, really? Oh, you're going to love it there." I hear everybody is just crazy about the principal. And she said, "Oh, that's great. I am the principal." So I was so happy to have, you know, done something nice for somebody, even if it was by accident. And and, and that's, and, you know, I just love going to American Canyon. They always make me feel welcome. It was fun to see the choir instructor, you know, just everybody. And I'm just, I can't say enough good things about the teachers in our school district and everybody. Oh, yeah, and a shout-out to Gloria Aguilar, whose daughter was Athlete of the Year, you know, just everybody worked so hard. The schools, the, the schools look wonderful. I trolled around on the first day school opened, and everyone looked so happy. So let's continue that feeling.
It's always difficult to follow Trustee Water's report. Well, welcome back to school. On August 10th, I also listened to the 7-Eleven Committee Meeting. It was really wonderful to see so many people engaged. On the 11th, I attended the Two by Two meeting with the City of American Canyon, along with Trustee Riser, who will be reporting out later. On the next day, on the 12th, I attended the Board Advisory Policy Committee Meeting, which will also be reported out later. On the 17th, I also attended the N B U S D Welcome Back for Employees in American Canyon High School. But I also got invited to give a welcome to Canyon Oaks Elementary, because that's where one of my sons goes to school. So it was really nice to see all of the teachers that I fondly remember two years ago, when the last time I saw them. And on the same afternoon, I met with American Canyon City Councilman Pierre Washington. On the 18th was the first day of school, and I had the pleasure of dropping off at two schools and saw craziness of traffic at both schools. I beat you there, Trustee Gracia, and pick up at both schools. So, but it was wonderful because at the elementary school, I got to walk in and see all the parents dropping off the kids. The kids were just wonderful, wanting to, you know, know how schools are like again. They knew where to line up, surprisingly. You know, even though it's been like two grade levels since they've been back. And it just was a general sense of happiness at the schools. I couldn't go on campus of my middle schooler. That's not allowed. But, you know, it was a, it was a good opening for everyone.
It sounds like I lucked out in the dropping off scenario. My wife works at one of the schools, at my son's school, so she gets to drop him off. I did have to navigate the river first day of school drop-off, and it wasn't too bad. Pickup was a lot harder. But, so on the 10th, I didn't watch the 7-Eleven live, but I watched the video of it. And on the 12th, I attended the Policy Committee Meeting with Trustee Water and Trustee Chu. And I wasn't able to attend the Welcome Breakfast on the 16th or 17th. I wish I could have. I liked seeing all the pictures and of everyone kind of enjoying coming back to the work that we all do together. And yeah, the first days of school, the reports from my kids are actually more thorough than I had expected. Not just, yeah, it was good. It was nice. They were excited to be back. And my son echoes the report on the nachos. They were very well-received. He said the chicken on the nachos was really good. Yeah.
Now I want nachos. I know those are one of Trustee Grass's favorite dishes, so it's a big deal. Nacho, we eat nachos.
He's passing it on to the next generation.
Yes, he is. It's all about the chips, right, Trustee Grass? Yeah, I mean, I'm just left with also gratitude. I was there, can't believe it was earlier this week. It just feels like that was two weeks ago for some reason. I kept calling today Tuesday at work, and everybody kept saying, "No, it's Thursday." So, yeah, being present at both of the Welcome Backs at Napa and American Canyon. I had the honor of Dr. Masetti asking me to speak as president of the board, but I just get so uncomfortable sometimes because it's just, it's all of us. It's all of us there. And it really takes a whole team, from the students to all of our staff and all of us in this room and in our student board rep and far and wide to get us to where we are today. And, and I had, I didn't have to drop off any kids, but I will say that being stuck in traffic just made me honestly smile because it means kiddos are in school and families are actively going up and about and doing what they got to do. And that's what it meant to me. It just was actually, okay, I was late 10 minutes. But it was a good excuse to say, huh, our kids are back at school, so it felt really good. All right, with that being said, we are now going on to our next items, which is Board Representative Reports that have been already mentioned. So we'll start with Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
We have not yet met.
Thank you. Facilities and Technology Committee.
We have not yet met.
Finance Committee, not yet met. Policy Committee.
We did meet. We did meet, and let's see. Trustee Dooley chaired the meeting and got us out in one hour. Called, he called the meeting to order at 12:30, and we discussed the March 2021 policy updates. And, and we'll be talking about them later on, but many of them reflected changes in state law about contractors and employees. They also reflected the changing family structures that relates to medical leave, leave for crime victims, and charter school renewal law. We spent some time talking about how charter schools need to have adequate performance as determined by the state tests, including subgroups. And if they don't have enough students to constitute a subgroup, well, that is another issue, isn't it? Our employees do have perhaps more latitude than they know for religious leaves, so we need to inform them. And people can submit claims against school districts electronically, how modern, the June 2021 policy updates. We concentrated, there were two new policies. One is on civility, which is that was prompted by some negative behaviors in other school districts. In short, school boards should demonstrate polite behavior that will encourage a positive social climate because everything we do affects our students. And, and, you know, of course, there's some examples of school districts that did not observe those norms, and it hasn't helped them at all. Okay, another one is on school SROs, and Mike Mansway said that the CSBA had caught up with the Napa Valley Unified School District on this one. You know, we're good. Policy, we talked about policies on waste management, also known as recycling and composting, which can be used as part of an environmental education curriculum. Once again, modern life is reflected in board policies on suicide prevention, child abuse, restraining orders to protect employees from gun violence. And this last one allows a school district to take out a restraining order for an employee who is feeling threatened. Policy 6157, we deleted distance learning so as not to confuse people because we're expanding independent studies. There is no average daily attendance money for district distance learning. In California, it was perceived by the legislature that some districts didn't push hard enough for a return to school. And by the way, public health guidance has changed. If a child tests positive, the class won't be shut down if the student is asymptomatic. Regulation 3541, this is about bus routes. And uh, we're going to have to revise ours as they're sort of obsolete. Our mileage needs to be adjusted. And this segued into an amusing discussion about how the district hadn't revised policies for decades. I don't know why. I think they're riveting, don't you? I mean, this is like, I look forward to this. And we had quite a discussion about how we need to keep buses for American Canyon because highway, of the highway, because highway 29 crossing, you know, can be very hazardous. And um, it was also noted that we transport 300 students a day to Silverado because the sidewalk on a significant stretch of Queensville Road is non-existent. There is no sidewalk and um, we're going to be seeking input from consultants about this and you know, looking at how other districts deal with it. And we, we had quite a discussion about redistricting. We are going to go with um, Q2 again, our um, demographers. And we look forward to community engagement around this process. And have I left anything out? It's good. Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now on to special education, community advisory committee.
We have not yet met.
Thank you trustee Riser, City of American Canyon liaison representative.
Yes. So I'll be reporting out from that meeting um, that I attended with trustee Chu and uh, Dr. Mercedes and uh, Assistant Superintendent Mungwala and Pearson. Um, and I also forgot to mention that I also had a follow-up one-on-one meeting with Councilman Pierre Washington from American Canyon. Just as a relationship building kind of check-in meeting um, to, to just continue to strengthen our relationship between our two governing bodies. Um, so we met on uh, the 11th and um, it was a very productive meeting. Councilman Pierre Washington and Mark Joseph were there along with city manager Jason Holly um, and trustee Chu and I and Dr. Mercedes and the uh, aforementioned cabinet members. Um, we made really good progress in getting clear about, you know, the, the sort of complete list right now of, of our shared interests and goals and then sort of brought more on a broader level, what our shared interests and goals are between the schools and the um, City of American Canyon. And also worked on nailing down some timelines for um, current and imminent action items that are before us. Um, we agreed that because we have a lot of items um, of overlapped interest uh, currently between the district and the City of American Canyon, that we're going to adjust the cadence of our um, meeting times. So we're going to go uh, for the time being, at least through December, from once a month to, to meeting twice a month, both for the two by two committee and also for the meetings between um, select city and district staff. And we're looking forward to that increased frequency of meetings so that we can continue to make meaningful progress on our shared interests and continue to strengthen the relationship and partnership between um, our school district and the city.
Thank you trustee Riser. City of Napa liaison representatives.
Oh, sorry. I was just looking at, at um, my notes for it and um, okay, well, I'm ready. Okay, the uh, this was a short meeting. It was the shortest planned meeting of two governmental bodies in history. Uh, it was only half an hour, um, but very pleasant. Uh, schools, distance learning is gone. We told them that we were expanding independent studies and at that time only 22 extra students had signed up for it, but you know, we have had more since then. Correct? Okay. Um, you know, there will be masking, of course, at the schools and with the Napa County Public Health, um, we had vac- vaccination clinics at Phillips and Harvest for students, families, anybody, and they were well attended. And we, um, 85% of our staff was vaccinated. We were working on uh, weekly testing with the unions. It looks like we are having weekly testing and we have more than 85% now vaccinated. Correct?
Correct. And then there's increase since the city and Napa meeting.
Okay, good. And um, we told the, we told the city that, you know, we're ready for reopening and that we appear to be more prepared than many other school districts. We have a full complement of SROs, school resource officer, excuse me, two at the high school, one middle school. The seven eleven committee, we told them it was launching the next day, uh, property overview entitlements about for Carneras property. And the next meeting is the 24th. There's not a lot of complexity there because it is in the ag zone, so we're probably not going to be putting up a hotel there. Okay. And um, that's a joke. We're really not going to. And um, Yountville, nothing happening. Um, looking at possibilities for harvest. Of course, they're very interested in that. Uh, the general plan update is coming. And their planner um, who was working on it left for another job. So they need to put someone else from the planning department in charge. But um, you know, we're very interested in hearing about that. And then the meeting was adjourned after half an hour.
Right. Thank you. I could picture myself in that meeting almost there trustee water. Thank you. Um, town of Yountville?
We have not met.
Thank you trustee Gracia. Okay, now we're on to superintendent and executive staff, Dr. Mercedes.
Great. Well, thank you trustees. It's great to listen to your reports. Um, I'm going to echo so much and so I'll scale mine back a little bit. Um, that theme of joy and gratitude, I think is, you know, I, I know me, my team, I know we're all feeling full of joy and gratitude. I just want to start out with um, a congratulations to the Napa Valley Unified School District for opening up our schools in 21, 22 and having a very successful first day. Um, apparently the theme here is traffic and nachos. I want to echo what President Gonzalez Manis said about um, the traffic. I don't have much to say about nachos. I haven't tried the nachos, but I'm going to now based on the endorsements from the duly's and Gracias.
I was gonna say, according to my daughter, you're missing out.
I clearly, clearly. I'm getting messages from others as you report out that they echo the uh, how great our nachos are. So yeah, assistant superintendent Pearson, please note that. There's a lot of love here for the nachos. But I, seeing the traffic, I just want to say for me, I, I was so happy to see drop off traffic. Um, lunch traffic. It was great to just, you know, here at the Ed Center, we always see our, our kids next door at Napa High School. Just seeing the kids in the streets, um, the traffic of pickup. I was just filled with joy and gratitude. And I never thought I would say that. So I'm happy to see the traffic. It's just an um, a symbol that we're back in school and, and kids are in school, which is great. I do want to thank the trustees. We had four trustees attend, but as you heard, each of our employee welcomes. So thank you to the trustees for your presence there. I think it means a lot to our employees at both those welcomes here in um, Napa for our schools in Napa. And we'd go out and do um, the morning in American Canyon for our, our staff out in American Canyon. I think it means a lot to them to see you all there. So thank you for those of you that were able to make it. Um, you know, and I'm just going to say, I think uh, yesterday and today, day one and day two, our theme better together, stronger than ever. Like, you know, I could recite that as a mantra like all day. So I have evidence of better together, stronger than ever all day long. Um, part of that better together and stronger than ever and the joy and gratitude that I feel is always because of the strong partnership that we have with our labor unions. I want to thank also our union leaders who intend, who attended the employee welcomes. And um, they weren't quite here at the beginning of the meeting, but I do want to give them just an opportunity because I know they work hard to attend our board meetings. Uh, or has uh, Gail Young from N D E A, I think may have arrived. So I just want to give her a moment to um, say hello. Are you there, Ms. Young?
Yes, I am. I was, uh, hello all. So can echo all the joy and gratitude for the wonderful, the wonderful time of being able to see so many kids and
We lost Gail. She was, I think, having some audio issues. All right. Well, Gail's, can we hear you, Gail? I think we lost her. Okay. Well, thank you for being here, Gail. We're grateful that you're here and it was great to see you this week. Um, I have Ms. Leslie Walder from NAPS also appeared. So I just want to um, give Ms. Walder an opportunity um, as part of my report, recognize her presence here tonight if she'd like to address the board. Is she here, Mr. Bassanat? I see her.
Yes, and she's able to talk.
Ms. Walder, would you like to address the board? Not having luck here with my union leaders.
We're not usually at this hour speaking to
I know. Okay. Well, audio doesn't seem to be working there for either. And thank you for being here. Um, Ms. Young and Ms. Walder, and thank you for all your collaboration. And we are again, better together, stronger than ever, so much because of the work that we do with CSCA and NAPS and N V A. And you've been critical in getting us through last year and, and been critical in, in having a um, successful opening to school. So thank you. Um, as far as the first day of school goes, um, again, congratulations. I'm not going to say much around the details and all the visits right now because a picture, our pictures are worth thousands of words, right? So with that, we have um, a short video that shows a lot of the joy um, that happened on Wednesday of our first day of school. Mr. Bassanat, can you show our first day of school video briefly? All right. Well, I want to thank our communications team for putting together that video. Wasn't the pictures worth thousands, thousands of words? Um, I want to thank um, our, our directors and H R and the instructional division. You saw my, um, three of my assistant suits in there. Um, we delivered lunches to uh, all of our principals and some treats for the office staff. That's become our tradition to make sure that there are site administrators are well fed and that our office staff have some treats because it's stressful days in the office, that first couple of days of school. Um, and of course, Mr. Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson and his team um, are our directors in operations. We're doing all the amazing work that they do in the background. So I want to thank them. They, they do such a heavy lift to get our campuses ready. I, I just don't even think that anyone can wrap their minds around what it is to get those buses and transportation ready, get, make sure our grounds look amazing. When I got back and saw Mr. Pearson in the hallway from my first day of school visits, the first thing I told them is I am so happy. The schools just look beautiful and clean. And that's such an important um, piece of the, the start of the school year, food service did an extraordinary job. Clearly, they're hitting it out of the ballpark with the nachos, uh, the custodial services. And then also Mr. Pearson and his team navigating, we do have some sites that have been dealing with construction. And the fact that our sites that, that dealing with construction had also a successful first day of school speaks to the preparation, planning, order and organization um, that comes out of our operational services division. So I want to recognize um, all of the lifting that, that they do to make sure that we have a successful day one. Um, before I toss it to my assistant suits, I just want to recognize that the Napa Valley Community Foundation um, uh, continues to be a, a strong supporter of our district's avid program. And so you may recall a couple of times in the last year or so, I've recognized and done gift acknowledgement when they make donations. It is part of the acceptance of the donation. So I want to once again thank them, uh, Napa Valley Community Foundation for their generosity. We just recently received um, $20,000 from the in-school and out-of-school fund and Gordon F. and Marlon J. Davies Endowment Fund. $20,000 for our avid program, which will go towards teacher training, registration fees, college tours and parent engagement uh, activity. So thank you uh, from that generosity. We also, we always appreciate those community partnerships. So with that, I'm going to toss to my assistant suits who've done, been working so hard this week to make sure that day one, day two, day three tomorrow will be a great success. We're going to start with Mr. Rob Mangwala, the Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Thank you, Dr. Mercedes. And thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. My update tonight will focus on enrollment. While the numbers I'm going to share are important, they will definitely change over the next couple of weeks. Ag, as of August 19th, 2021, our enrollment in our student information system was 16,603. This represents a drop of 179 students since June of last year and a drop of over 400 students since the first day of school in August 2020. Site principals are in the process of manually counting all students who attend school over the next 10 days. Students that do not attend will be contacted to the district and determine if their absence is temporary or if they've moved and they need to be dropped. This process is referred to as a confirmed count. As of the end of the first day of school, our confirmed count was 15,936 or about 700 students lower than our enrollment number in our student information system. We anticipate that the majority of these students will attend over the next week or so. An initial analysis of the, of this data indicates that these students are not at school due to typical reasons that occur during the first week of school, such as illness, extended vacation, and in some cases, moving out of the area. I'd like to highlight both the data and enrollment team to have been burning the midnight oil to ensure that families that complete the enrollment process are synced into our student information system and students are able to attend school as soon as possible. They have also worked to process our inter-district transfer requests or families from other school districts that choose to attend Napa Valley Unified School District. The number of inter-transfer requests has steadily increased for our district and is as follows. In 2017, 18, our inter-district transfers were 389. In 18, 19, 436. In 19, 20, 574. In 20, 21, 652. For 2021, 22, we're already at 653. We anticipate that this number will continue to go throughout the year. This concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Mangwala. Um, next we have Ms. Dana Page, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening, President Gonzalez Morris, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mercedes and Student Board Member. Last week, we welcomed 30 new certificated employees, uh, including administrators, teachers, counselors, psychologists, nurses and speech language pathologists to our new, our new certificated employee academy. During this two-day onboarding event, we introduced new employees to our district policies, our priorities, our culture, and of course, to each other to start the relationship building and, and connecting with one another. That's so important for the success of our team. We have leaders from both N D E A and NAPS to talk about our unique and highly leaders from both NVEA and NAPS to talk about our unique and highly collaborative relationships with our bargaining units. In addition, the Instructional Division provided content to help our new staff support students with their social, emotional, and academic needs, including presentations on NVUSD high-leverage instructional strategies, a Promethean Board Training, information on MTSS, PBIS, and restorative practices. I'd like to say a big thank you to Norris Tregone from HR for all of her organizing, and to our presenters, Sarah Knox, Kristin Nelson, Ashley Green, Gina DeLuca, and Gail Young. We are also happy to announce that we received great news regarding the Classified Summer Assistance Program. This is the fourth year that we've participated in the SAP grant offered from the California Department of Education, which gives extra money to eligible classified school employees who withhold earnings during the year in order to receive a summer check. The exact amount varies each year, and we just learned that the state will be providing our participating classified employees with 100% match of that money that they've set aside. So in total, NVUSD secured $472,000 for employees by signing up at the CDE at no cost to the district. I'm surprised that there's only 213 districts in California who participate in this opportunity, because it basically provides a little extra to nine-month employees, including instructional support personnel, campus supervisors, food service, and childcare workers who directly support students during the school year, and then often have to find ways to supplement their income during summer months. So I'm surprised more districts don't participate, but at the end of the day, we get more money when other districts decline. So I guess I'll be happy that they didn't participate and proud of NVUSD and the team in HR Business Service who do the work to help support our lowest-paid employees, and because they're so dedicated to helping our students, who really like having this opportunity to show this extra support for them. And this concludes our report.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Page. And next, we have Ms. Pat Andrew Jennings, our Assistant Superintendent of the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Morris, Board Trustees, Student Board Member, Dr. Messetti, and the NVUSD community. The long-awaited first day of school, where we were able to welcome all of our students back to in-person learning finally arrived. I was, it was such a joy to visit school sites, to see classes of excited students and staff engaged in learning. And I still, I kind of teared up a little bit with the video, just to see the kids so happy and joyful and back to learning. As we began this new school year, our secondary world language teachers received some much-needed new curriculum. Our world language teachers were provided training last week on the newly adopted world language curriculum for French and Spanish. At the elementary school level, the newly purchased Benchmark Advanced component of our core curriculum will provide additional phonics lessons for our kindergarten through second-grade students to address some of the unfinished learning from the past school year. These materials in support of Annual Board Priority Number Two, the full implementation of MTSS, will provide targeted phonics instruction for struggling readers. The materials will arrive in September, along with professional learning on how to effectively implement the new instructional materials. In relation to Annual Board Priority Number One, the middle school design team launched the next phase of the design process in partnership with Design for Emergence. On August 9th and 10th, with a two-day design drive, the middle school design team participants who engage in this work represented parents, students, and staff from all of our middle schools. I was most impressed with the input gathered from the student focus group. Students shared the importance of creating space and time during the school day to develop connection and relationships with other students and staff members. They also expressed how that sense of connection to school supported their learning. The design team will meet over the next few months to finalize a district-wide vision and create program alignment among all of our middle schools. This work also includes the program components for non-DLI students who will attend the new Middle School Language Academy. You'll learn a little bit about the work of the, the design team specifically for the Middle School Language Academy in a presentation later this evening. And lastly, we value our community partners. And tonight, we have a short video from the Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley. As the Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley, the Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley Executive Director Greg Bullier shared during public comment tonight, we partnered with them over the summer to provide full-time, no-cost summer enrichment programs to 550 NVUSD students. They have also provided thank-you cards to all of the trustees. I believe they have been shared with you or will be shared with you tonight. Mr. Bassinet, can you please roll the video?
Hi.
Hello.
Bienvenidos.
Hello.
Hi, everybody.
I love everything about coming to the club. I love every day that I come here. I love that my work matters. I love the mission that we stand for. I love when we thrive. I love when we struggle. And I love that you're here to help us do it.
Buenas tardes. The only reason I come to the club every day is because of you.
You make all of this possible.
You make all of this possible.
I love coming here, so it's pretty important to me.
Tu eres importante.
You are changing my life.
You are changing my life.
You are changing my life with high fives, basketball, dance, and best friends.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Jennings. Thank you for the lovely video too, from the Boys and Girls Club. We appreciate that. And then, next, we have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees the Operational Services Division.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Morris, NVSD Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Messetti, Student Representative Emily Bede, and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a brief update on Operational Services. I will defer some of my time to update the Board of Education during the Facilities and Bond Program portion later. Briefly, the Custodial Operations Side, Food Service, Maintenance and Grounds, and Transportation Directors and Staff did an outstanding, excellent job preparing for the opening of the 21-22 school year, which contributed immensely to the successful opening by, at all the school sites that happened earlier this week. Additionally, staff has remained extremely flexible to meet the various needs at each school site as we continue to evolve in this ever-changing world that we live in. Then, and that concludes that portion of the report. I just want to also briefly mention about our vaccination clinic that we continue to offer school sites to Napa County Public Health to use as vaccination clinics. Earlier this week, on Wednesday, a vaccination clinic was held at the American Canyon Middle School Gym/Community Center. And next week, a vaccination clinic will be held at McPherson Elementary School from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. for the first dose. More locations and dates will follow in the near future, so please stay tuned. And if you're interested, you register at myturn.ca.gov or .gov. And this concludes this portion of my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And we do have a Facilities and Bond Program update, correct?
We do. So, Mr. Bassinet or Ms. Jurgensen, I don't know who's going to tell you. It's okay, great. So, thank you, Trustees and Dr. Messetti, for the opportunity to provide you with Facilities and Bond Program update. It has been a very, very busy summer on that. If you go to the next slide, for the Bond and Facilities Program update, our strategic plan goal number four is the one that applies the most to us, which is the tactical proactive and efficient asset management. However, I did want to take a time to express that we earned great support of the NVSD Board Annual Priorities, and particularly priorities that are focused on supporting student achievement, which we would, which would specifically be Board Annual Priority Number Two and Number Three. We believe that by supporting these two, by our work in the facilities, we really greatly enhance and support Board Annual Priority Number Two and Number Thirty. On an update of some of the projects, we had a number of camp, you'll hear tonight, a number of campus modernization projects that happened. The project, the process to date on the American Canyon Middle School Student Commons, some movement of portables that we had over the course of the summertime, the Pelican system installations, which is going to make our HVA systems a lot more efficient and cost-effective, how we, how we improve the interior rooms at several school sites with new flooring, the site relocation of Stonebridge schooled from the Carr Narrows Campus to the Mount George Campus, and then also moving the Napa Junction teachers and staff from their, from their former site to their brand spanking new site. So to take us through this entire tour and give us a really a robust overview of what happened over the course of the summer, I'd like to introduce our Bond Program Manager, Vice President of Van Pelt Construction Services, Kelly Jurgensen, who will take us, take it away for all of you. So please, Kelly, you continue on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Messetti, and President Gonzalez-Morris, and the trustees for having me back. If this presentation looks a little bit familiar, we decided to step a little bit back in time to June 24th, when we gave you an update on the start of the summer work. We're circling back in the same presentation with some more information on the successes that we had this summer. So I will start with Alta Heights. At Alta Heights Elementary, we implemented our, one of our campus modernization projects, and we replaced 38,627 square feet of roofing. We placed 15 new HVAC units, and we did 5,400 square feet of accessibility upgrades. We also repainted the entire exterior of the campus. As you can imagine, that's quite a bit of work to squeeze into a roughly two-month summer. But I really do want to take an opportunity to thank our business partner, Wright Contracting, for the tremendous hard work that they did to get this campus modernized and get these critical systems online. And so if you have been to Alta Heights, you can see that it got a new coat of paint, and they are going to be enjoying their new HVAC system. And we appreciate the patience of new Principal Ward and his staff as we rush to finish these projects. I also want to take a time to thank the maintenance and operations teams for all the work they did coordinating with our contractors and getting everything off the ground in time for the start of school. So Donaldson Way also got a very similar treatment, new coat of paint, roofing, HVAC units, and accessibility upgrades. You can see the numbers there for what we did at Donaldson Way, and we even managed to keep the very cool dragon mural in place. So our painters were very skilled at painting around that, actually making it look kind of fresh and new. You can also see the new look of the front of campus and the new HVAC units that we are putting in place that really help with energy efficiency and also filtering air, both for wildfires and for COVID. So it's really great improvement at the site. And again, I want to go ahead and thank the team at Donaldson Way for their patience with us as well, and same team here of Wright Contracting and the district making this happen. All right, at Silverado Middle School, we did an update to the large gym, which translated into 24,644 square feet of roofing replacement, three rooftop units, six outdoor units, and approximately 8,000 square feet of site accessibility upgrades. If you have been in that lower parking lot at Silverado Middle School, you know that it's sort of a tough one, and accessibility is not that great. So along with improving the roofing and the HVAC systems, that was a really important piece of this project, is sort of cleaning up that site work. Also, work over at the Napa High School Gym. So you can see here that it is getting a new coat of paint, really bright and lovely on the inside, and showing a little school spirit with the colors. We are also in the midst of replacing 2,197 square feet of new windows. The windows are on order. This project had always tracked on going just a little bit outside of the summer schedule, so staff had been coordinated on that. And we really appreciate the flexibility of the staff at Napa High, including the Athletic Director for working with us on relocating students for a short amount of time. Those windows are coming, and we'll have pictures of that in a future update. Over to American Canyon Middle Student Commons. We've really been moving forward on this project. Tomorrow, there will be concrete pores, so we'll start to see the slab coming in on the new building and working with the site to really maximize the amount of space they have on-site, and be respectful of the students and staff as they come back. But our contractor is making tremendous progress, and the project is on schedule. And a little update from one of your former colleagues. On Monday, I ran into former trustee Shank on his morning walk in front of the campus, so everyone knows he's still keeping tabs on us. All right, and welcome to Napa Junction Elementary School. If anyone hasn't been there yet, this is, that definitely doesn't do it justice. It's such a beautiful site, and it was really exciting to spend the last couple of days at the site, seeing the students, the parents, and the faculty start to enjoy their new space. We coordinated the move, finished up the project, and are working to get everybody settled in at that site. All right, so here is our, our summer to-do list that we showed you back on June 24th. In addition to the projects I just covered, we also replaced 9,056 square feet of new roofing at the vintage high school practice gym. We relocated two portables to Vishi. One replaces their restroom, which was aging out, and one allowed the new NVUSD childcare program to take place. And we also relocated a classroom on behalf of Stonebridge to add a little classroom space over at Mount George Campus. In addition to that, maintenance implemented a project where there were over 200 devices replaced that are going to update more systems over to Pelican controls for our HVAC, which really improves both operations and energy efficiency. And there were 25,920 square feet district-wide of flooring that was replaced, just going by age and wear and tear, spotting different classrooms that needed that treatment. And as mentioned previously, we also relocated the Stonebridge School to their new home at Mount George. And thank you for your time, and that concludes our report on our summer work.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson and Kelly. That is not an easy summer, very busy. I only got through replanting some of my plants in my backyard, so I was feeling proud a moment ago, not so much anymore. And this patio bench that was in a box for a month. So, thank you so much, and just really a special shout-out to you, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Pearson, for always helping us connect the importance of our facilities and how that impacts our classrooms and the teaching, which we are here to do, which is our students, and how important those facilities are in making that connection. It's really easy to just see that, but making the connection is truly important. So I thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we're good. And we are now moving on to item H, which is the Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion and roll call vote unless discussion of item or items is requested by the board members.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Dooley. Mr. Bassinet, do I have any public comment on consent agenda items?
There is no public comment.
No public comment, thank you. Student Board Rep? Oh, before I do that, I'm sorry, it's roll call. Vera, could you please take roll call?
Yes, Student Board Member?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Morris?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vera. All right, that moves us along to items I, Presentations and Discussion Items. We have a couple of items here, and we'll start with Introduction to CSBA Recommended Policy Updates, March 2021. So President Gonzalez-Morris, these are what the Policy Committee reviewed, and
So President Gonzalez Mares, these are what the policy committee review and we're bringing them tonight for first read and we'll bring them for action at the subsequent meeting.
Okay. That's for item I one A and then item I one B. Also for introduction. Okay, looking like no questions. This will come back to us. And before we get to the next item, it's getting close to our break, so let's just do that. As this next item, we want to give it our full attention and not have a, kind of a, a break in the middle of that. So let's do that. Okay, thank you. We'll be back in five minutes. Okay, we are getting ready to recon. Okay. We are now getting back to our items here. So item I two A, this is regards to the Middle School Language Academy. Mission and Vision Presentation.
Thank you, President Gonzalez Mares. Mr. Bassinet, can you bring up the slides, please? Good evening again, President Gonzalez Mares, Board Trustees, Student Board Member, Dr. Mercedes and the NVUSD community. Our presentation tonight covers one component of the overall middle school design work that I described in my staff report. Tonight's presentation will focus on the work during the last few months to develop a mission and vision for the new Middle School Language Academy. Director Monica Ready has led this work in collaboration with the principal of the new Middle School Language, Middle School Language Academy Principal Alejandro Uribe. I'm eager for them to share the progress they have made in creating the foundation for what is sure to be an exemplary learning community for middle, middle school students at the new sixth through eighth grade language academy. Director Ready, please proceed. Next slide, Mr. Bassinet.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Jennings. And good evening to the Board of Trustees, President Gonzalez Mares and Dr. Rosano Mercedes. Tonight, we have the privilege of presenting on behalf of the Middle School Mission and Vision Committee, the timeline, research process and next steps in the development of the new Middle School Language Academy. Next slide, please. Bringing our communities together, Napa Valley Language Academy, Public Vista Magnet Elementary School, Harvest Magnet Middle School, River Middle School and Napa High School began on July 14th with an outside facilitator. Starting in the summer was key to having time prior to open enrollment with our staff, students and families to design more detailed programmatic aspects of the school and support families with this information during open enrollment. After our first session on July 14th, we shared with the larger community through community information sessions in both English and Spanish. Following the community information sessions, students and families had the opportunity to share their interests through a survey. If you could show the timeline on the next slide, please, Mr. Bassinet. And go ahead and click through to the next one. Thank you. The information from the survey was compiled and used during our second session with the Mission and Vision Committee. You'll see on August 6th, the committee finalized the mission and vision for the new Middle School Language Academy. And we are excited to present these aspirational goals with you tonight. With that, I have the privilege of introducing the current principal of Napa Valley Language Academy and future principal of the Middle School Language Academy, Principal Odebe. And I will hand it over to her.
Thank you, Director Ready. Good evening, President Gonzalez Mares, Board Trustees, Dr. Mercedes, Student Representative and Napa Community. I am thank you, I am thankful for the opportunity to share with you our progress in regards to the launch of the Middle School Language Academy. As we are still in the initial phases, it's very exciting to see the program slowly come together with the development of the mission and vision as we will use this to make decisions in the future that pertain to program design, curriculum and other components of the school. In my presentation, I will share some of the research, the resources that we used by the design team, along with the process that we went through to finalize our mission and vision. Please advance. Mr. Bassinet. And one more. Thank you. So the first resource that we share with the design team were the three pillars for dual immersion, for any dual immersion program that needs to be grounded in research. And, and this research is conducted by the Center for Applied Linguistics. All successful dual language immersion programs are prioritized bilingualism, bilingual literacy. And when we talk about bilingualism and bilingual literacy, we're looking at the four language domains and how we intentionally develop these four domains, which is reading, writing, listening and speaking. We also incorporate high academic achievement as a focus. And again, as we're looking at this, we're looking to developing both languages. And we're looking at ensuring that we offer courses and then also after school or throughout the school enrichment opportunities in both languages. And last but not least, ensuring that we incorporate opportunities for a strong focus on socio-cultural competence. And this has to do with providing opportunities for students to have a positive self-identity and appreciation for themselves, one's culture and other appreciation, appreciation of others. And also doing this through the interactions that we have with our students and staff, but then also intentionally incorporating curriculum that allows for students to be able to have access and tap into these opportunities. Next slide. Another resource that we were able to use in our, in, with our design team came from a book called The Successful Middle School that is written by Dr. Penny Bishop and Dr. Lisa Harrison. And this great book also branded us in research as it highlights different components that are key to launching a successful middle school. So as you can see on the screen, the essential attributes talk about having a responsive middle school. One is that responds to the needs of the students. One that is challenging, one that empowers the students also to take ownership of their learning and contribute positively to the world around them. Program that is, I quote, meaning that we provide socially just learning opportunities and environments for all. An engaging meaning, an engaging and meaningful learning environments that are relevant and motivate the students. The characteristics that we learned about and discussed had to do with culture and community. Ensuring that we have a very welcoming community for all students from all different backgrounds. Curriculum and instruction and assessments that are challenging, exploratory and diverse. And also provide different types of assessments and ongoing assessments, again, in both languages. And then the leadership and organization piece also is important as it, it's, it's key to have a shared vision by all stakeholders for policies and practices and are always student centered, are always having the students in mind. Next slide, please. So next, I'm going to talk to you about the process that we took to, to get to our mission and vision. The next slide. So after reviewing the resources that I mentioned, the, the research that we explored from the center from Applied Linguistics and the book from the Successful Middle School book, we grounded our work in two guiding questions that we presented to the Mission and Vision Design Team. And you see the two questions on the screen. We, we talked about when a student promotes from a dual language middle school, what are the characteristics? And when we're talking about characteristics, characteristics, we're talking about attributes, traits. And when we're talking about characteristics, we're talking about attributes, traits, and qualities. What should a student who graduates from this middle school, what should they demonstrate? And then also, the second question where we grounded our work to was, in what ways can the school celebrate languages and cultures as part of the socio-cultural competence? So then what we asked our design team, if we can advance to the next slide, Mr. Bassinet, thank you. We asked the design team for the mission and vision to highlight keywords and phrases that we felt were key and important, that needed to be included in the mission and vision. With the amount of participants that we had, we were able to create four different groups. And so in the first group that you see on the left-hand side, those were key words and phrases that were identified by all four groups. So these words were academic and linguistic excellence. Those were important and key, and high importance to be included in the mission and vision. Bilingualism and bilinguism were key. Culture of respect, civic responsibility, inspiring and empowering, and also one that would develop the whole child. The next column that you see on the right-hand side, those were identified by most of the groups. So two or three groups talked about the following being important to include in the mission and vision. So equal access, collaboration, communication as a life skill, independent thinking, local and global action, supportive environments for students, staff, and families, and then also having a value for student-driven concrete. We're going to go to the next slide. And then we also had some words and phrases that came up by maybe a group or two. It wasn't something that was very strong or prevalent across our groups, but we felt it was important to mention these. Also, I think as you see them on the screen, you notice that some of these key words and phrases could also be part of key words and phrases that we already mentioned. They're just worded in a different way. So these outlier words and phrases that came up were authentic learning experiences, open-minded towards international perspectives, and building integrity to become model citizens, and building caring relationships. So with these key words and phrases, we were able to then advance these to our community and seek input from our community as we were asking for their input in terms of, you know, what is important to our different stakeholders, right? All the different schools that are going to feed into the middle school or have had some dual immersion background. So I'm going to toss to Jane Stennis, who is a participant in the design team, who's going to tell you a little bit more about the survey and what we found.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Mares, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Member, and thank you to Principal Uribe. We took the key words and phrases that were identified by all groups and the key words and phrases that were identified by two to three groups in the design team and created two surveys, one in Spanish and one in English. Each survey asked the community to rate the key words and phrases the groups identified. These two surveys were then shared with our community. Please advance to the next slide. Here are the responses from the survey that went out to our Spanish-speaking community. As you can see, we had 81 responses from the following schools: Harvest, River, NVLA, Pueblo Vista, and Willow. The most responses came from the NVLA community and the second highest from our Harvest community. Please advance the slide. Here we have the responses from our survey that went out to our English-speaking community. In this pie chart, we had 175 responses. Thirty-two percent of the responses came from the Pueblo Vista community and the second highest at 29.7% from the NVLA community. Please advance the slide. Here we have the results from the English survey. Three of the phrases that all of the groups in the design team identified as important, the English-speaking community agreed with. Fifty-six percent agreed with developing the whole child, 45% academic and linguistic excellence, and 40% bilingual and bilinguism. Sixty-two percent of the English-speaking community also thought that communication as a life skill needed to be included, and 38% wanted equal access. Essentially, the survey is responding to the outcome of the design team's work. Please advance the next slide. Here we see the results of the Spanish survey. Similar to the English survey and the design team, we have 39% agreed with the academic and linguistic excellence, 16% bilingual and bilinguism, 9% developing the whole child, with equal access being 43%, and communication as a life skill of 11%. Once again, the survey is responding to the outcomes of the design team's work. Please advance the slide. As we can see, this demonstrates that the design team and the community are aligned. The first three from the design team were mentioned by all participants. Please advance the slide. From the survey results, a mission and vision statement was crafted and shared with the design team on the August 6th meeting, who then used the I Like and I Wonder protocol to craft and edit our current mission and vision. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you one of the students who participated in the process. He is honored to read you the mission and vision for the Middle School Language Academy. Please welcome Erin.
Next slide, please. Good evening, Dr. Masetti, Board of Trustees, and community members. My name is Erin Calderon, and I'm an eighth grader at Harvest Middle School and the Dual Language Immersion Program. I am a former NVLA student. I participated in the design of the mission and vision with the committee. I'm excited to announce the mission and vision for the new Middle School Language Academy. I will begin by sharing in Spanish. The mission is to provide a global education that still has a love for learning and honors languages and cultures. Our vision is that all students are empowered to achieve academic excellence while growing bilingualism, bilinguism, and interpersonal connections in a community that is responsive to the well-being of all learners. Now I'll pass it on to Ms. Reddy.
Thank you, Erin. It's hard to fault the passion and inspiration of a student, especially this late at night. Thanks for staying with us and making that announcement.
And your school tomorrow.
I know, I might have to send an email to your teacher and send her a big thanks. So we're ready and thrilled to continue this design work, so I'll continue on with the next steps. The mission and vision of the Middle School Language Academy is the first phase of school development. The next phase of the process is developing a new identity and name for the school aligned to the mission and vision. With that, it's important to frame this within the annual board, District Annual Board Priority focused on articulating programming, strengthening the dual language immersion program, and reaching full enrollment at the Middle School Language Academy. Next slide, please. The school development process is in conjunction with the larger middle school redesign process, as you heard earlier tonight during Ms. Andrew Jennings' board report. Participants from the Mission and Vision Committee were able to carry these aspirational goals into the larger design work for all the middle schools, which began with our partner, Design for Emergence, on August 9th and 10th. The purpose of the larger NVUSD middle school design team is to support the design of high-quality, comprehensive middle schools, the other success criteria mentioned in the District Annual Priorities, and the strengthening of the dual immersion pathway through a new Middle School Language Academy. The design team is working in partnership with Design for Emergence to co-design a cohesive vision for the comprehensive middle schools, as well as a key set of design principles and agreements that bring coherence and alignment across the middle schools. The production of this vision and the design principles that started on August 9th and 10th will support the next phases of the work focused on these board priorities. Articulation of consistent course offerings, services, and programs across the three middle school campuses with clearly articulated programming at the new Language Academy through a collaborative approach. We look forward to providing you updates throughout this process. Next slide, please. Thank you to our Mission and Vision Committee, those that are here with us tonight, and those that gave up their time during their summer, as well as their evenings during their summer to help us with this really important work. I want to give it a special thanks to Erin Calderon for being our student participant and presenter tonight and staying up late with us, and our larger school communities for responding to the survey and providing input through email and our community sessions as we continue to support the development of this new Middle School Language Academy. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Director Reddy and staff for participating, as well as our students. And yes, it is a school night, so thank you for being here. Let's open it up to questions, comments?
I had a question. It looked like on one of the slides you had indicated that communication as a life skill was strongly aligned with both what the committee had thought and then the parent survey responses. It didn't appear, however, that that made it into either the mission or the vision. Is there a reason for that?
I'll go ahead and start us off. So the interpersonal connections aspect of the vision was where we were able to capture that. It was hard. Communication and collaboration came up throughout, and so we tried to capture that with that interpersonal communication, as well as the focus on bilingualism and bilinguism as communication skills. Is there anything else other participants want to add to that?
I think you captured it pretty well, Director Reddy.
One thing, sorry. I think one thing I want to add is that we saw a lot of common themes with keywords and phrases that were coming up, but they were just being expressed in different ways. And I think that's, you see, like I said, just different keywords and phrases mentioned in different ways, and I think that communication was one of them.
And then my second question, you mentioned that you used the I Like, I Wonder protocol. What is that protocol?
Go ahead, Director Reddy, if you want to share. It's a very common protocol.
We took the responses from the survey and saw the alignment, the data compiled, as you saw tonight, which Mr. Dennis so absolutely shared with you all. And we looked and crafted a mission and vision that they could review and say the aspects of it that they liked when they were in groups within the design committee, and then those aspects of it that they wondered about. And this allowed us to have a starting point, so we weren't, our scope of our mission and vision work as we came back together on day two wasn't too broad, as well as then narrow and hone the language of the mission and vision through the wonder aspect of it, and move the process forward through that protocol.
I have a quick question. As always, thank you for the hard work that went into this presentation. As one of the success indicators, it says full enrollment at the Middle School Language Academy, which of course we anticipated. So are we going to, as the discussion matures and you drill down on the pathway and not just the middle school portion, are you going to look at the matriculation that has previously occurred between elementary and secondary as you kind of consider environment, curriculum, and program to reach those enrollment numbers?
I mean, the short answer is yes. Part of the work that was, part of the work that was done was looking at the overall, the mission and vision that was developed for the K-12 alignment a year or two ago, and that's sort of helped to start this work. And so that is part of the process, and we will be looking at those sort of articulation points or matriculation points between elementary to middle and then middle to high for that.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anecdotally, just kind of, you know, and this, it's not about necessarily next year, but it will impact next year. Just anecdotally, I did, in my first day of school visits, visited Pueblo Vista, which would be one of the theaters in the pathway to the Middle School Language Academy. And I think we shared some of these numbers late last year, but Principal Roca Hunt had me visit the sixth grade class that we held back at Pueblo Vista, which is the sixth grade class that would, it is sort of waiting to transition there for seventh and eighth grade. Originally, in that class, only 11 of the students were going to matriculate up to the middle school program located at Harvest, with being able to stay at PV for sixth grade in anticipation of the matriculation to the Middle School Language Academy at the new site. We had, I visited with 42 sixth graders. So that right there shows you just anecdotally and qualitatively, a first step towards that shift in matriculation up to the secondary program.
I just want to thank the whole committee for your work and dedication, and I think you knocked it out of the park with your mission and vision statement. It really, I can only imagine how challenging it was to sort of boil down the key ideas and settle on the language that best captured everybody's priorities and feelings, and I think it's great. So thanks for that, and I'm just really excited to see how this unfolds and with your continued diligence and commitment. So thank you all.
I appreciate the combination of the hard work that the design committee and/or the Mission and Vision Committee did, along with the incorporation of community input. And I know that the process going forward will have other opportunities for community involvement, and I just would encourage that, obviously encourage the community to get involved. But I particularly like the method that this committee used to incorporate that community input. It's a thoughtful way of converting survey results into something meaningful and productive. And so I both appreciate and encourage continued use of that thoughtful approach to community involvement.
I also share Trustee Dooley's feelings about the process and how productive it was. I'm especially impressed by a student who committed so much time during summer. I have an eighth grader, and I don't think he would have been on board if I signed him up. So thank you to Erin, and actually, all the other students who are part of the middle school redesign process. It's a lot of commitment, but it will be worth it. Thank you.
This is very exciting, and I'd like to echo my colleagues, thanking you for your very hard work over the summer. And I've ordered The Successful Middle School. I look forward to reading it.
Yeah, I echo. Just the construction of the committee with the diverse perspectives, including a student. I think that's quite always powerful to have that in the room. The vision and mission is just right on, and had the combination of the data, the input, the key words, and just the guidance. I love the I Like, I Wonder. It's actually a really fun exercise to go through when you're trying to construct things. It makes it pretty kind of even fun, like I wonder, right? It sort of lets you think about the things that you wonder about that may not have a place and just sort of, maybe it does have a place, and you just, that wondering takes you there. So it just makes it really a full circle for me here when you add processes like that in here. And the timeline looks amazing to me. I wrote it down and looking forward to those ongoing updates. And again, this is the District Annual Priority, so pretty awesome to see that moving forward, literally right now. And so yes, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings and Director Reddy and Principal Uribe and the students for participating.
And I do, oops, thank you so much for that. That's a great close, but I just want to add, thank you to those three ladies for sure. I think it is really powerful that students have been involved in both the middle school redesign, or the middle school visioning, the vision and mission process for the Middle School Language Academy. Let me get it straight, a lot of middle school in there. And then the middle school redesign work that Director Monica Reddy alluded to as a As a strong secondary leader and recovering, recently recovered high school and middle school, previous to that middle school principal, I think Ms. Ready understands the value of having our, our young people in the room, right? Our middle schoolers and our high schools have a complete capability to help shape this work. And so she's really centered them in this process. So I, I really want to recognize that because it's easy for school districts to say green might go and leave the students behind. But it's been extraordinary to see their integration and leadership in the work.
And President Gonzalez Mars, I really do want to spotlight the, that Monica, Director Monica Ready has really led this work and has got us to this point where we are, you know, well positioned to complete the entire middle school redesign work for all of our middle schools. So I just really want to take a moment and appreciate her and Principal Unity Bay's work this summer when other people were on vacation. So thank you so much.
Ms. Andrew Jennings, I believe that the, the curriculum and student support committee will be getting some updates, right? More diving deep into the middle school redesign next week. Is that correct?
That is correct. On the agenda that will be published tomorrow at the, by the Board Advisory Committee, we will share information, a little more information around the, the middle school design work that's touching all of the middle schools. So that'll be part of our update on Wednesday.
Great, thank you. I will ask if we have any public comment on this item. Mr. Bassinet?
We do have public comment. First person will be Norma Ortiz.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Ortiz.
Yes, thank you. Well, this, all this work is very interesting. I, I just feel in my opinion that there should be, well, more, there should have been more surveys. The, the numbers I feel are somewhat low in terms of data. Also, it would be nice, since this is an ongoing process. It hasn't yet finalized, that the parent engagement component and the community could have that opportunity to talk about more about the programs and services around the, the already targeted bilingualism, the literacy, the high academic achievement, the social cultural competence piece in the future meetings that are going to be scheduled. And also, a lot of emphasis in the social cultural awareness, the cultural responsiveness, especially that. And also the cultural identity component, the styles of communication in terms of, of how that's going to be bridging the differences and the access to opportunities. I would like to see more of that developed in, in, in the future meetings, a little bit of conversation on that. That would be very nice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there further comment, Mr. Bassinet?
There's no more public comment for this item.
Thank you. Now going on to item J, action items of the agenda and action item J one A. This is CDPH K through twelve school laboratories memorandum of understanding between Napa Valley Unified School District and California Department of Public Health.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Great, thank you. Item J one B Dominican University Agreement for Student Experiences in Occupational Therapy.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Water. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Item J one C Request to Hire Educator Less Than Fully Credentialed.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment for this item.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. Item J two A, this is site agreement for Paya Von Strasser, Wake Forest University.
So moved. Second.
I said that right. First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. J two B Establishment of Citizen Advisory Committee for Naming the New Middle School Language Academy.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? All right. That's one report I look forward to hearing. Lots of them, of course, but that one's exciting. Okay. J two C Agreement Between Inspire Consulting and Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item J two D Independent Study MOU between Sanlino Unified School District, Calistoga Joint Unified School District, Pope Valley School District, Howell Mountain School District, with Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. Item J two E Deletion of Board Policy six one five seven regarding distance learning.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstain? Item J three A Contract for Services with Culver Sonoma for Dairy Products.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Then we're on to item J four A SPC number one dot one dash twenty-two Request for Management Services by Friars Consulting.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Right, motion passes. J four B SPC number one dot two dash twenty-two Request for Consulting Services with King Consulting for the State School Facilities Program.
So moved. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Thank you.
I just wanted to say briefly that I look forward to learning more about the state school facility program at F and T.
All right, so we're going into informational items and under this section, it's not require board action. So this is the June twenty twenty-one investment report. And then item K one B Enrollment Report.
I would say that this is concerning considering that we've lost so many students. I think it was reported earlier as a hundred and seventy-nine with quite a few still unaccounted for at the beginning of the school year. So that's not good news as far as finances is concerned.
Yep, I think it's.
It's true, you know, but there's, I don't know, I want to find out more about this. The Chronicle last week had an article about how San Francisco could be the most, the lowest percentage of individuals eight, under the age of eighteen, thirteen percent. And Napa is twenty percent. And we have lost three percent since the last, since the last census. And I mean, so it's like, we have a lot of people, people with children who've left Napa.
And we.
It's not, don't take it as a personal rejection, David.
And we didn't grow very much since the last census. Very, very little. Yeah, just like over a thousand. It was just such a small number. Yeah.
Our largest student loss was as of five seventeen twenty twenty-one, which was eighty-one students. That's a pretty big jump, one seventy-nine. And we'd been, you know, hovering around under fifty students around, you know, previous to that. So that's substantial. And it, but it's also loommates that illuminates the data that the demographers provided. It shows some consistency in the data gathering that we've been doing and the decisions that we have been making. So it's, it's not validation that I like to see, but it, it does show that all the, you know, all the research that we have been provided with has had a high sense of accuracy.
Yeah, Wilson. All right, we are now going into item K two A, which is a quarterly report on Williams Uniform Complaints.
Good job, no complaints.
Right. All right, so now I'm moving on to item L Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent. Okay. Just, yeah, it's Mars Friday and ending the first couple of days of school. Few days of schools opening this week, so may everybody have a good next week. And future agenda items? All right, and just like, you know, with future agenda items, one thing that's sort of becoming a realization for us is that we are entering the last year of our strategic plan. So we are like really hyper-focused and especially with our board meeting this last summer where we did it over our priorities. We have a plan of where we want to stay focused and that's a lot of work that our staff is, is doing, just even over the summer and over breaks and whatever I think spare time is happening. And I think the team is full on, so just something to, to keep in mind that I've started to keep in mind that I think we have our to-do list for this year and it's quite full. All right, so for next item is the adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second.
First by trustee Gracias, second by trustee Dooley. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.